Thank you and welcome to the May 20th, 2013 Hillsborough Township Board of Education Meeting. This is our mid-year organization and regular meeting. I'd like to call a meeting to order. In accordance with the state sunshine law of New Jersey, adequate notice of this meeting of the Hillsborough Township Board of Education was provided on May 16th, 2013, to the Hillsborough Beacon and Courier-News. May we roll call please, Mr. Mahmood?
Sure. Ms. Bogaczewski?
Here.
Ms. Santafante?
Here.
Mr. Gillette?
Here.
Mrs. Haas?
Here.
Mrs. Haley?
Here.
Mrs. Lay?
Here.
Mr. Pulserfer?
Here.
Ms. Wasson?
Here.
And Mr. Kins?
Here.
We have a call.
Okay, if we can rise for the Pledge of Allegiance, please.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, before we get on to the regular part of the meeting, we're going to have our mid-year organization meeting. And typically, when we have elections in April, the first meeting after the elections is an organization meeting for both the board members, where the president, vice president are selected and committee, the committees are assigned in addition to professional services, so that the school can function properly. With us moving to the election to November, for the board to start in January, it's been recommended by New Jersey School Boards Association, and it just makes common sense, to still do an organization meeting with regard to professional services that align with the calendar year. So, from July 1st to June 30th. So, that's what we're going to do right now, and then when we complete that, we will continue on with the regular part of our meeting. So normally...
You do this.
Lucky.
So, you want to lead this, or shall I?
Whatever you like.
I couldn't usually, you can rejoin.
Okay. I'll let Dr. Schiff introduce us.
All right. I ask for the board's consideration of the following motions under the mid-year organization meeting agenda. The designation of signatories, general operating payroll accounts, payroll agency accounts, section 125 account, high school athletic accounts, building rental accounts and investments. Would you like me to read it all as a consent agenda?
I can do that. Did we do it through?
I went through up to B.
Up to B.
I just did A.
We can do it.
Okay. I'll continue on. Designation of official newspapers, including the Beacon and the Courier-News. Designation of depositories of school funds, as listed. The board auditors, board attorneys, engineering services, school physician, treasurer of school monies, insurance broker of records, school warrants, board policies, job descriptions, field trip designations, school district curricula, NJSIAA, Skyline Conference. Mr. Guy Whitlock will be our new affirmative action officer. Lenore Johnson will remain our section 504 officer. Mr. Amin Mahmood will be our liaison for homeless students, and he will also be our board secretary. Our attendance officer is Jane Williams.
Okay. I'd like to entertain a motion for items A through U of the mid-year organization meeting agenda.
So moved.
Do I have a second? Second. Any discussion? Mr. Gillette?
I just had one question for Dr. Antunes about the field trip destination, just a curious thing. I saw that we enlist the year of first approval, that only go back far as 2008. So, do I take that to mean approvals have a five-year approval?
That's when the accountability regulation said we had to start approving field trip destinations.
Okay, so that doesn't, it doesn't expire?
No.
Unless we take it off?
Unless we take it off, right.
Okay, great. That's all I have.
Okay. Any other questions, comments, or discussion? No? Okay. Roll call please, Mr. Mahmood.
Ms. Bogaczewski?
Yes.
Ms. Santafante?
Yes.
Mr. Gillette?
Yes.
Mrs. Haas?
Yes.
Mrs. Haley?
Excuse me, yes.
Mr. Pulserfer?
Yes.
Ms. Wasson?
Yes.
Mr. Kins?
Yes.
Motion passed.
Motion passes, okay. Officially organized. Now, moving on to the regular portion of the, of the meeting, we have correspondence that's listed as in the agenda. No minutes have been submitted for approval, and now I'd like to hand it over to Dr. Schiff for the superintendent's report.
Thank you, Mr. President. I don't have a formal presentation tonight, however, I do wish to inform the board as well as the public, if you haven't seen recent news reports, there was an F4 or F5 tornado that just went through Moore, Oklahoma. The devastation, it looks like, was total. It was very, very troubling, seeing the news programs, including at least one elementary school was devastated. So, our hearts, our thoughts are with this community during a very, very difficult time.
Thank you, Dr. Schiff. Agree. Okay. Moving on to new business, if we can first have new business from the public. We will be going, in addition to the board action agenda, that we will be soliciting comments there. Okay. Seeing no, no one from the public, do we have any new business from board members?
New business.
Okay. I have, I have one piece of new business. Saturday, a week from this coming one, Saturday, June 1st, is the Hillsborough Hop, 5K race, starting at the YMCA. For those of you who are interested in running, it supports a good cause. And for those of you who have kids who are interested in running, they can register, as they register, they can register for their school. There's a district-wide competition for whoever gets the most entrance. Last year's winner went to Eris. You can see the hoppy award as you walk in. It's proudly displayed. And so, and they also have parent-child teams as well. So, father-son, father-daughter, mother-son and mother-daughter. So, come on out to the hop. Little commercial blurb. Any other new business from board members? Committee reports. Start off with human resources with Mr. Pulserfer.
I thought if I moved, you might not see me over here. Human Resources Committee met last Thursday night. We had a relatively short agenda. We started with review of resolutions for the delegate assembly, which was actually this past weekend, but a chance to go over some of those and give our feedback to the delegate. We followed that with discussion of regulations regarding physical exams for teachers, teaching staff and support staff. These are pre-employment, and there was some discussion on that, those regulations. And one of the issues that came up was some of the specific details in the regulations about what medical tests should be done and so on and so forth. There were some questions about that, and in fairness to the other committee members, I was the stick in the mud. But we discussed that with the administration, and they're going to do a little research for us on some of those issues and get back to us, so we can proceed on that. We also had a discussion about salaries and positions for the technology integration specialists, and that kind of expanded also into the, a discussion of the longer-term plan for how we will be incorporating technology experts within the organizational structure. But there was no final resolution from anything on that. We also discussed a proposal that had been brought up for a directive of school security. We discussed that, both from the administration perspective, from the board's perspective. While we felt this was something that we need to be on the alert for, and it's certainly something we need to pay attention to, we didn't see that in any way it warranted any kind, anything to the level of a full-time position. So, we did not proceed on that. And then we also just discussed the ongoing future meeting dates to get a set schedule for that. And that was the HR committee meeting.
Thank you, Mr. Pulserfer. If we can go to the election commi, or Education Committee with Dr. Wasson.
Thank you, yes. I'm reporting for Ms. Lay, who couldn't make it tonight because of her daughter's graduation. We had a very long meeting, about five hours. So, we covered a number of topics, and I'll just touch on them briefly. The first is we heard from Mr. Handler and his staff about an update on the one-to-one initiative, which was very interesting. They're reviewing the data, and will be making a recommendation to the full board soon. The second is we heard recommendations from the math department. Tracy Nair was there and discussed with us how they might use the two new staff members at the high school, and most effectively. And I, we had some discussion about that, and we feel that that might, that there's a solution that might affect, really, the algebra, the Algebra I situation the most, but hopefully will trickle up as we move along. If the children get the concepts in Algebra I, they might be further assisted in geometry in Algebra II as they move up. The third was we heard an update on the world language selection process at Eris, and the administration will be making some reports, I think, on that in the coming weeks, if they figure out how the scheduling will work and everything. But it looks like we will need two Spanish teachers at Eris, because the selection for Eris was so great. We did have a lot of students selecting Mandarin as well. We approved textbooks and curriculum for literacy, 9 through 12, as well as a textbook for the language of composition, which is for an upper-level course, and choral music and sight singing for 9 through 12 as well. We also discussed the school calendar, and the majority of the members in attendance recommended the school calendar, which we will be discussing tonight. Lastly, we discussed the issue that Mrs. De Senzo brought up at the last meeting regarding the school nutrition policy, or the cupcake policy, as I think it's being called around town. The, I want to point out that the board policy that we had in place, as Mrs. De Senzo pointed out, said that the longer parts of the policy about sugar being the first ingredient, the fat contents, all of those things are not, are not applicable to what, to school celebrations or to curriculum-related activities. That was a misinterpretation of the policy. And so, we, we actually sought to clarify further by suggesting some language, so that the, there wouldn't be a misinterpretation in the future. Unfortunately, it doesn't appear that that would be passable legally. So, we are hoping to maintain the current policy, but are working with the administration to ensure that it is interpreted the way that we intended, which is that foods of minimal nutritional value, which are defined as Italian ices that do not contain juice, chewing gum, soda water, hard candies, would not be part of the celebration. But that would not exclude cupcakes. That would not exclude Rice Krispie treats, brownies and that sort of thing, which do apparently have some nutritional value because of the eggs and the milk in them, and allow the kids to have some fun at the same time. So, that was the, what, three minutes on our five-hour meeting?
Thank you, Dr. Wasson. Operations Committee, Ms. Gillette?
Thank you, Mr. Kins. Operations Committee met May 15th. We certainly can't beat Education Committee for quantity, but hopefully, we can make it up for it in quality, I'm hoping. We met for about an hour. So, the first thing we did, one of the things we did was, we did review the different items that Mr. Kins took, participated in at the New Jersey Delegate Assembly. Also, we had brief, we were briefed on a legal matter, which I'm not at liberty to divulge the specifics of. Those are very quick. We had three regulations, regulation on school safety, regulation on active shooter, and regulation on reporting potentially missing or abused children. These were all pretty much boilerplate with little discussion, and were, those are on, I believe they're on the agenda for tonight. We also reviewed bylaw 0177. I know Dr. Wasson had a question about that, but we couldn't understand what, what the question was referring to. We understand the question. The question was, you can follow up later on this, but the question was about what would we do if we received no bids for a professional service? But there was some other little nuance to it. But regardless, I think that's been taken care of, and it is on the agenda for tonight, I believe. Also, Mrs. Bergman came in, Kia Bergman, she's been working on our adult education program for implementation this coming year, coming up, and she briefed us on that, and we asked, can we please vote on that? Because it was a little question of whether that's something that we need to vote on. And Dr. Schiff said, yeah, we can vote on it, so it's, we're going to vote on that tonight to recommend the implementation of an adult education program. And, couple of things, couple more things. I'm getting to the good stuff at the end here. Are, all of our construction projects are coming along as expected. Only, the only one of note that had any changes at all is the skylight at Autun Road School. It's going to be changed, the scope of the work is going to be changing slightly, in that the skylight itself is going to stay in place, but be, I guess you'd say buried behind the new construction around it. And that way, we could recover and reuse that skylight again, if it became feasible or beneficial to do so. And I think I'll do one more item. We were briefed by Dr. Schiff about graduation ceremonies at Hillsborough, for Hillsborough. As most of you know, the last few years especially, when our graduating classes have become very huge, very big, with sometimes 600 kids graduating, that our ability to accommodate students and their families indoors during inclement weather, and that includes excessive heat, is now, has been for the last few years jeopardized. So, for over a year now, we've been looking into, maybe close to two years now, we've been looking into what arrangements can be made to have our high school graduation at another location off-site. For those of you that might be watching this on Channel 27, or the internet, or in the audience tonight, that think this is a terrible idea, and it's not the best solution, I kind of agree with you. I don't think it's the best, it's not the solution I would want. I would like, in the best of all possible worlds, to have our graduation somehow onsite. But it has just become impossible. And if you're in the other group, which there are many, I've spoken to in the last week, many parents that say to me, why didn't you do this two years ago? That's because we have explored every option over the last two years, and really tried to keep it onsite if possible. And we're just at the end of that process now. There's no way to do it. So, we're going to, we plan to have a graduation this year on June 8, not this year, in the following year, June 18, 2014, at the Sun Arena in Trenton, and the Operations Committee is going to take a look at the, at a contract, I think at a future meeting, to make sure it's up to standards. And that's about it. That's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Gillette. Any questions from the board members with regard to any of the committee reports? Okay.
No questions?
And I'd like to open it up to, to the podium, to the public, and solicit comments from the public regarding the action agenda.
Dana Blevins, First Vice President of the Hillsborough Education Association. I have a couple of clarifying questions on the proposed calendar for next year. Under, in the center of the proposed calendar, where it lists the dates and the reasons, under April, it says 14 to 18, spring recess, but then it says slash in-service day, and then on the 21st underneath that says in-service day closed. I'm just wondering what the slash in-service day is between the 14th and the 18th?
Thank you for bringing that to our attention. Actually, as of just a couple days ago, it was 14th of the 21st, spring recess slash in-service day. In order to clarify that, we moved the 21st, called it an in-service day, but failed to erase in-service day from 14th to 18th.
Okay, thank you. And my section, second thing, I think, is probably just a, a language change as well. At the very bottom of the calendar, in the second one, my copy, which is in color, the green box, where it says new teacher in-service, and list the dates, and then it says 10-month support staff return, and then it says 8/19. I believe I'm correct in saying that should probably read 10-month office personnel, or spell it out even more, secretaries and clerks, because not all of our support staff return on that date.
I'll definitely check that and clarify it, sure.
Thank you.
Thank you. Any other public comment with regarding the action agenda? Okay, moving to the action agenda. Dr. Schiff?
Thank you. I ask for the board's consideration of the following motions under the section of Education.
Sorry?
Call again, because somebody was coming up.
Oh, I apologize.
Intensive motion.
Mary Beasley, 49, New Amwell Road. I have a question about the calendar also. I'm wondering what made you decide to only put in one emergency day, when in the last years, it's been years since we've only had one emergency day? I'm kind of curious how you came to that, knowing that, you know, more than likely, we will certainly need that, more than one.
Yeah, two reasons. The first was to try to graduate the week of the 16th. If we had to push it out a couple more days, we don't graduate on a Friday, that would actually push graduation to the following week. That was one of the reasons. The other reason is that the two in-service days that are late in the spring, we could use as snow days now. So, if we ran into difficulty with a lot of bad weather, snow, hurricanes, whatever, we could use the 23rd as well as the 21st as our two additional snow days. So, actually, the calendar has three built in, without extending the graduation beyond the week of June 16th.
Okay, so just one more time to clarify. So, really, pretty much it was determined, though, by the graduation day, you're saying? You didn't want to have to move the graduation day?
Well, no, we actually did move graduation as part of the iterations of the calendar. We actually moved it back a particular day. But, yes, graduation is, can define where, what kind of period of time we can do. We typically don't graduate on a Monday or a Friday, so we want to do Tuesday, Wednesday or Thursday on graduations, and that, and that does limit us somewhat. But what we tried to do is to put into the calendar the opportunity for teachers to actually take courses, as we have done with the technology courses this year, where if you take X amount of hours, you don't need, you have fulfilled your professional development hour requirement. And we would do the same thing for next year with 12 hours, rather than just the six, for both of those days. So, this is something that we have spoken with, with Barbara Parker about, as well as the administrative and leadership team, and the Education Committee. Everyone thinks it's a, you know, it's a, it's a good way to move it ahead, without building in two additional days into the calendar, to have three days in for snow days.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
I hope we've got more. Good. Mr. Blevins?
Dana Blevins, First Vice President, HGA. I now have a second clarifying question, based on the last discussion. If the situation happened where we would have more than one emergency day, and we used the 21st and the 23rd?
Yeah.
The calendar makes no mention of when those two staff in-service days would be. Am I, are we to assume that they would be at the end of the year, as they have been in the past?
Exactly. After, after students are dismissed.
After students are dismissed.
Yeah. Similar to what we did this year.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Joan Murphy, Piney Woods Drive. My question is about the graduation. If the venue gets changed, will you be providing transportation for the graduates to get there?
No, I don't believe so, but we're, we are in discussions about how would we work the project graduation right afterwards? Like how, the transportation, the logistics of that. But, no, the students will be, in the same way that they would if they were here, would, transportation would need to be provided to that location. The question is, again, would we release the gowns at that point, put the kids on the buses for project graduation there, or would there be a span of time in between?
Right. Because if some children choose not to go to project graduation?
Yes.
Then they'd have to make plans for that, too, right?
Yep.
If they're, okay.
Thank you. Okay, so you have no more public comment? Let's move to the action agenda. Dr. Schiff?
Thank you. I ask for the board's consideration of the following motions under the section entitled "Education." To approve professional travel and related expenses, to approve overnight field trip, the harassment, imitation and bullying investigation list, textbooks as listed, as well as the curriculum as listed, to approve the revised district calendar, as just discussed, to approve curriculum writing, to approve the submittal of the summer school application for the summer enrichment program, as well as approve the submittal of the application for the ESL Summer Enrichment Program, to approve the amendment to IDEA grant for fiscal year 13, to approve the school nutrition policy for first reading.
I'd like to entertain a motion to approve items A1 through A11 of the action agenda.
So moved.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Okay.
My, yeah.
Okay.
My question is, are we approving a new policy for school nutrition, or?
First reading.
Just first reading.
Second, yeah, it goes through two readings. The second reading is where the policy is actually approved, so we can modify it for the second reading, or table it indefinitely. Okay. Okay, any discussion? Mr. Gillette?
Thank you. I just wanted to say, I'm not that crazy about the calendar. Several months ago, Dr. Schiff and I, and Mr. Mahmood, met with some representatives of the Township Committee to discuss some concerns residents had about polling places. At that time, we were concerned about two election dates, the school board election in April, and the primary election in June. We really didn't discuss the November general election, because at that early point, there was no idea that we would ever be open for school on that day. I don't, I'm not convinced still that that's a good idea. I know that Dr. Schiff and people at the Township Committee and their employees, our township clerk, went through a lot of trouble to get the polling places moved, to make it somewhat feasible, maybe. Some people would disagree with that characterization. They might say that it's very feasible and, and quite doable. I still have my reservations about it. Notwithstanding, parents that, many parents in the township that appreciated having some of those days in November off. As you know, those were used for in-service days, which just, those days have to be put somewhere else in the calendar. It doesn't make the school year end any earlier. So, for those reasons, and I know that it's been the wish of the majority of the board for a very long time, to be open on those school days. So, I understand that, but I just wanted to let you know that I'm, you've already known the calendar. So, I'd like to ask to separate the calendar.
Okay. Any other discussion? Ms. Haley?
Since polling sites are going to be school locations, are we discussing with the chief or the county, the fact that we may have to hire police officers to monitor the doors? And I'm not, I'm not quite convinced we have a plan.
Yeah, we will reach out and develop a security plan for both the high school, as well as the middle school. The polling places, as the board's aware, the community may not be aware, are no longer going to be at the elementary schools or at Eris. So, that, we will incur some costs possibly, in order to secure both the high school and the, and the middle school. At the high school, there's separate entrance into the library, which will be acting as the polling place. That, that library was, was reviewed by our municipal clerk to make that determination, that it would be large enough to, to be appropriate. The middle school has, has been a polling place for a while, but because students would be in the building, we would need to secure it.
Thank you.
Dr. Wasson?
I said this at the Education Committee, I think I said it before December, when the incident took place at Sandy Hook in Connecticut. I'm not convinced that there's a way to protect sufficiently the staff and students that are in the middle school, if we're having the front doors open and voters or others walking through, you know, potentially walking through the school. through the school to the media center. I would much prefer to, if, well, to use non-school buildings, but even in the event that we had to use a school building, to use a site similar to the high school where there would be an exit with a securable doors so that there would be no, you know, no opportunity for somebody coming through, or at least a hindrance to that opportunity. You could at least have police officers on the other side. You know, we were told police officers can't be in uniform because that's inhibiting or intimidating voters. So, you know, even plainclothes police officers, you know, if, are no, there are no challenge to an automatic weapon. I don't know how to secure the middle school, or unless we use the annex cafeteria, but there's no immediate parking after that, and it's not an option now because the Board of Elections has already acted. So I agree with what Greg said, and I would have to vote no because of that. Thank you. I also think we should separate the first reading of the nutrition policy since we've determined that's probably not a legal option. Thank you.
Any other comments?
I don't know if I'm allowed to ask this. How many polling facilities are in the middle school?
I don't know offhand. I think one or two were added as a result of the restructuring, but I could be wrong. I'm sorry.
I was just trying to figure out if there was a way to move them out. I'm thinking if one or two, we could find a different location.
I don't think right now we can do anything.
That's really not our determin, we would work with the, with the clerk at the municipal office as well as the county election officials if a polling location would be moved, even within a facility. You need their approval to do that. But they know both sites. They've looked at both sites and they've approved both sites. I think the concerns that both Dr. Saigon and Mr. Gillette express are certainly valid concerns. We will be developing a security plan as a result in consultation with the Hillsborough Township Police Department, if it passes, if we have school.
Mrs. Haas.
Yeah, I just want to say to people who are concerned about voting in the schools, we've taken all the voting out of the elementary schools, and when I researched this a long time ago, I found that we are the only school in Somerset County and probably well beyond that didn't have school on Election Day week. And I guess during years of presidential elections where there's, you know, the greatest possible turnout, we could still, based on how the calendar falls, take that one day off. The problem for us was that this year is particularly badly set up in terms of where holidays fall, and every single vacation seemed to be longer and larger than most. And there were just a lot of things that created this calendar, and I think given the excruciatingly hot graduations that we've had the last couple of years, that there was a true desire to graduate earlier than the 30th of June. So, you know, everybody, you know, has different feelings about it, and I respect that, but I think overall, you try to make some compromises so that you get the year done in a way where people aren't passing out in the hallways. And I think that there are a few proactive things we could do for Election Day in the two schools that we're having polling. I think it would be good to notify the public that there are certain times when the buses are present, that it'll be difficult or more difficult than other times to vote, so to plan their day accordingly. And I do think we could ask for some assistance in that regard from the police department. But we are out of all of the elementary schools, which is a major, major, major accomplishment. And the six polling places that remain will be busy. There's no doubt about it. But again, we'll see how it works this year, and if adjustments have to be made, they will be in the future.
Thank you, Mrs. Haas. Mrs. Bogachewski.
Yeah, I just, I just have a question. So this calendar, we keep prolonging and prolonging and prolonging, and I understand it because we want it to be the best for our parents, students, and teachers. However, if this is our only one concern right now as, as board members, being the fact of voting purposes, is there a way that maybe we can come back to that one decision and just vote on the calendar as it is? I mean, I, I understand about, you know, keeping our children safe, our staff safe, and the voters safe. I mean, I'm completely on board with that. But if that's just our only one thing right now, I mean, maybe we can just kind of put that aside and just vote on this calendar that these parents are dying for.
Yeah.
Can we, can we do that? I mean, we've still got from now until November to try and figure out what we're going to do in the process.
So from a, from a calendar perspective, what's, we are going to be voting on the calendar as exists. Does that prevent the district and the board from changing it yet again? No. Is it likely? I'm not sure. You'd have to assume that we will not be, that this will be, that, that each vote as they're, as they exist is intended for it to be final. There are challenges particularly this year, or for, for this year, the 2013-14, because historically, with schools starting after Labor Day, you have some days of September that occur before Labor Day weekend, which allows for in-service days. That doesn't happen here. So typically, we have three in-service days at the beginning of the year. That would be starting school one day that week. So there was a compromise there, and then as we discussed earlier, we don't want to be going into the last week of June for classes. And so these were some of the compromises that were made. And with regard to the communication, and Dr. Schiff, we've, when we talked about moving the election sites out of the, out of the elementary schools to the high school, we did that quite a while ago. That's been discussed and, and, excuse me, publicized frequently. And Dr. Schiff, in many of the board meetings before, has said, my recommendation coming up is going to be, A, we're going to have school November 4th, 5th, and 6th, and then probably be off that first week of September. So now we're just trying to finalize it so that people can make, make their, make their plans for the year. And the longer that we keep holding it up, it's, it's going to keep putting that up in limbo. So.
I appreciate all the work going into the calendar, because I pulled it up, and I think a couple of board members pulled up the calendars from Bridgewater, Montgomery, Plainsboro, and they all mimic each other, with, with an exception of the day here or there. The Election Day, all the schools seem to be open. Do we know if any of those other districts have polling in their schools, and if they have a plan that maybe we can vote, which will make people comfortable?
I don't, I don't have those plans, but I can certainly reach out to them. We, as, as all of us know, we have had polling in schools for, for many years, not, not during the November elections, but during the April and the June elections. So we, we do have experience with it. This, this is going to be unique, having it at two schools rather than at, I forget, six schools, seven schools that we had in it before. But I'd be more than happy to reach out to my colleagues.
I think that will put people at rest, because I, we moved it because of parental concern. I said, so that's, I think, was now making people leery about voting on that one day in the calendar, because I knew about the high school. I didn't realize we were keeping it at the middle school, so that's, I think, what people are concerned about. But I think if we have a clear plan that doesn't involve the staff having to monitor or worry about it, and I think, you know, because we ask the staff to do that a lot during the elections, and I don't think we can. If we're going to have a huge volume of election, we can't ask them to be responsible for those pollings.
No, we, we need to get security.
Any other discussion regarding the items? Okay, so we're going to separate items A6 and A11. So this vote is going to be on items A1 through A5 and A7 through A10. May I have a roll call, please, Mr. Mahmood?
Ms. Bogachewski?
Yes.
Ms. Antifante?
Yes.
Mr. Gillette?
Yes.
Mrs. Haas?
Yes.
Mrs. Haley?
Yes.
Mr. Pulsofer?
Yes.
Ms. Saigon?
Yes.
And Mr. Kent?
Yes.
Motion passed.
Motion passes. Okay, now I'd like to entertain a motion to approve item A6 of the action agenda, which is the calendar.
So moved.
And do I have a second?
Second.
Okay. Any other discussion regarding the calendar? Okay. Roll call, please, Mr. Mahmood.
Ms. Bogachewski?
Yes.
Ms. Antifante?
Yes.
Mr. Gillette?
No.
Mrs. Haas?
Yes.
Mrs. Haley?
Yes.
Mr. Pulsofer?
Yes.
Ms. Saigon?
No.
And Mr. Kent?
Yes.
Motion passed.
Motion passes. Okay. Item A11, the nutrition policy, with the suggestion that the education committee made during their four and a half hour meeting, was some alternative language to try to make it more clear, that basically has been, has been portrayed in the press. We don't want to be the cupcake police. The language that is in the policy is actually, essentially mirrors what's in the state laws. So we tried to change, change it to be more clear, to exclude food that is brought in from the outside or for special occasions. So the way that is danced, as Dr. Saigon said, it's those foods of minimally nutrition value, which is, as Mrs. Saigon laid out. We did get a legal opinion, and what I'd like to do actually is, I'd like to send it back to committee so that they can review the legal committee and take one last go at it, as opposed to have a first reading and then have to, have to change it.
Another five hours.
So hopefully not. It wasn't just for that one.
Not for me.
There's been a lot of energy that has been spent on it, and hopefully we can just get this resolved. And there's also, with the current policy, I think the administration understands where the, where the board, at least the committee's direction is on that, and how best to properly implement and administer it and enforce it.
Are there, are there any options that we have, given the legal opinion?
Do more, restrict more.
Yeah, one option is, is actually, you can, you can, you can be more restrictive. So if we just wanted to have a no food policy, we could choose, we could opt to do that, so that people could not bring in any food whatsoever. I don't think we're in favor of that. Or we can continue looking to see if there's any alternatives. From a language perspective, I'm not sure. So, and then the alternative is going to be the.
They're telling us that we can't.
Yeah, so.
I guess I'm a little confused. If, if our policy mirrors the state policy, why do we think we could do anything but? Not, not that I agree with state policies in general, I just want to say, that if, if they've dictated what that policy should be, why would we try to do something different, which only opens us up to criticism from many sides for not doing consistently what the state requires?
The way that, the way that the, the state policy is written, and also our policy, is it talks about food that the district provides to students. So whether it's through lunch program, breakfast, after lunch programs, snack bars, conven, vending machines, a lot of that is, you know, food that's provided for by the district. There is an exception for food that is provided for special occasions and for curriculum. And in that, the one restriction that they have is the food of minimally nutrition value. The way that, since, since the thrust of the policy was with regard to food that the district provides, what we wanted to do is can we be a little bit more clear on food that is brought in by parents or students to share with, to share within a class. And so that's the language that we, that we put together, and then we wanted to make sure that we could. The legal opinion was basically, no, you can't. And so that's, that's where we're at.
Which is, I guess, which is, again, comes back to my confusion. If, if the rest of the policy is about the food we provide, which I think we're really stuck with whatever the state says, or the federal government, which probably even drove the state's policy, and then our, the legal opinion we got was that we can't change the rest, what are we trying to go back and do? If we, if we're stuck with the first part, and our lawyers say, don't change the second part, why wouldn't we just approve it as it is? Because we're, we're stuck with it.
Pretty much, the policy's going to stand as it is, and I think there's more clarity in terms of how to implement it. You could go more restrictive. It does allow for that. With regard to the actual state mandate, you know, this is, you know, state encroaching in on what districts can and cannot do. So people that are opposed to it, write to your state assemblyman, woman, and, or senators.
Understood. I just think that if, I mean, it seems to me like we really don't have, well, unless there are members of the board who are interested in making a more restrictive policy, which I didn't think was the case, I don't see there's any reason not to proceed, because we're not going to do anything about it, unless we do absolutely nothing because our current policy already is approved and we don't need, in which case we just abandon the whole thing. I just don't see why we're sending it back to committee when it sounded like there's nothing the committee can do, except be more restrictive, which.
Yeah, so I'm basically to send it back to them if they want to make that decision, just to kind of close the loop on that. So.
Spend five hours. If anybody wants to get in a human resources committee, we only meet for like an hour and a half, two hours.
So I think since it's on the agenda, we're going to need a motion to table it. So.
So, so moved.
And do I have a second? Okay. Okay, roll call, please, Mr. Mahmood.
Is this to table?
This is to table.
Yes.
That item on the agenda.
Can I ask a question?
Yes, Mrs. Haas.
For our upcoming end of the year school parties, what are people allowed to serve or bring or contribute?
Crudités.
I mean, seriously.
So, okay, yes, actually.
We're going to table it. We need some clarity.
So it's the food of minimally nutritional value. I'll let Dr. Saigon rattle off the specifics since you, you had it, and then I'll, and I actually want to, I actually do want to add some commentary to that, so I'm actually glad you asked that question.
So the foods of minimally nutritional value, according to the USDA, which are available on, by Googling this, are water ices that do not include fruit juices, chewing gum.
Which causes choking hazards.
Soda water, meaning soda. Hard candy, and some spun candies, and that's about it.
Okay. So. Yeah, so.
Are we in the middle of voting on tabling?
Well, yeah, I just, I just wanted.
So there would have to be a rewrite of Mrs. Borax's guidance to state that they should not include, celebrations should not include foods of minimally nutritious, nutritious value, which, as she can include the list, as I just stated, and, and strike the part out about the first ingredient cannot be sugar, there has to be less than six grams of fat, and all of the other stuff, which is in our, our nutrition policy, as it relates to serving in the cafeteria or selling in the cafeteria. And I should also add that we, as an education committee, decided that we were also going to revisit what could be purchased using your POS account, because. Because I know I get annoyed when I give my daughter a check and it disappears in a month because she's buying Otis Spunkmeyer cookies and Snapple, which is not part of the nutritious lunch program. So anyway, I just wanted to add that as an aside.
So also with regard to end of the year celebrations, here's, here's an example of trying to employ common sense within governmental institutions. But we expect that, that for people that are going to bring food in for the end of the year celebrations, use some common sense and courtesy. So for both the nutrition aspect and also for children with life-threatening allergies, you can, if you want to bring in more healthy food, crudités, apples, fruit, vegetables, have at it. More the better. If you want to bring in non-food items, little party favors, pencils, erasers, have at it. The more the better. And then also, if you are, if you are bringing in food, show some courtesy to those, the classes, you know which ones have children with life-threatening allergies, provide a list of what's going in the ingredients to the, to the class parent or to the teacher ahead of time, so that that can get communicated to the parent, so that, that way that the child could either participate directly or, or bring in their own, their own piece. So I'd like to think that common sense can, and common courtesy can prevail in situations like these. So, thanks. Now we're back to the vote to table the nutrition policy first read. Kent.
Ms. Antifante?
Yes.
Mr. Gillette?
No.
Mrs. Haas?
No.
Mrs. Haley?
Yes.
Mr. Pulsofer?
No.
Ms. Saigon?
Yes.
And Mr. Kent?
Yes. So it's a split vote, so it is.
Doesn't table.
So we're, okay, so let's, and then we're going to vote on it. So it was, it was a vote to table. It did not pass because you have to have a majority, so now we'll actually vote. It did not pass, because you have to have a majority, so now we'll actually vote.
But it did pass, there was only...
It was four and four.
Can I ask for a revote on the table?
Okay, we can revote.
Let's revote on tabling.
Okay.
Because of discrepancies in the tally.
I think it was five to three. I thought it was five to three.
I thought it was five to three also.
Yeah, I also thought it was five to three. Who voted no?
I voted no.
I voted no.
We had Greg, Mrs. Haas, Mrs. Haley.
No, Mrs. Haley voted yes.
I voted yes.
She voted yes. No, she voted yes.
I think we need to vote again.
Fortunately, there weren't so many that I lost fingers on this.
All right, now we do have it.
I'll make sure I get closer to the mic this time.
All right, let's try this again, please, Mr. Mahmud. Okay, so the motion is to table the item A eleven on the action agenda. Can I have a motion again?
No.
So moved. Second.
Roll call please, Mr. Mahmud.
Ms. Bogushevsky?
No, is this to vote again for the table?
Again, this is to table, we are revoting it.
Yes.
Ms. Antifante?
Yes.
Mr. Gillette?
No.
Mrs. Haas?
No.
Mrs. Haley?
Yes.
Mr. Pulsifer?
No.
Ms. Wasson?
Yes.
And Mr. Kent?
Yes. Okay, five to three, the motion passes. Moving on to the action agenda, please, Mr. Dr. Schiff.
I ask for the board's consideration of the following motions that I'm recommending under the section entitled "Human Resources", the retirement of Denise Ordway, fifth-grade teacher from Autton Road Intermediate that has been, who has been with us for over thirty-three years. We thank her for her service to our district. To approve the resignations as listed, to approve the revisions to the 2012 summer secretarial salaries, to approve appointments for the 2012-2013 school year as listed, long-term substitutes, mentor, coaching positions, change in assignments, I'm sorry, these are all for the 2013-2014 school year, excuse me. The tenured, approve the renewal of the tenured certificated staff, renewal of the tenured HPSA administrators, renewal of the HEA office personnel, approve the renewal of the HEA clerical assistants, luncheys, custodial and maintenance staff, transportation drivers, summer work salaries for the 2013 school year, approve the 2013 extended school year program salaries, approve the non-tenured first-year HPSA administrator.
I'd like to entertain a motion to approve items B one through B fifteen of the action agenda.
So moved.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Any discussion?
Could we get clarification? I saw a couple of the, and I apologize for not noticing this earlier and sending it over. B two, motion to approve revised 2012 secretarial work, should that be 2013?
Yeah, this was, this was an error. Originally, they were calculated at their per hourly rate. They should have been paid and compensated at their per diem rate.
So this is actually a retroactive?
This is retroactive, to correct them, my mistake.
Okay, that's good for B two. B three says 2012-2013 in the heading, but says 2013-2014 in the paragraph.
It should all read 2013-2014.
Any other questions or comments? Mrs. Haas?
I have a strange question. In the summer work salaries, I noticed that certain people who were ten-month secretaries, for example, were coming in for an additional twenty to thirty days. At what point does a ten-month position become a twelve-month position?
Over fifty days, I think.
What's that?
Some, it's like, it's over fifty days. We recently had a study on that.
Right, but when people start out with the ten-month schedule, and then they have like an additional five-month schedule, a five-day additional to the school year, and then on top of that, thirty days, were they working twelve months, they would get probably, after a certain amount of years, they would get vacation time for the balance. So are we really talking about the same?
We actually did do an analysis for the negotiating team of that, of that very question. And it looks like in terms of the cost to the board, that it's not a wash to make those positions twelve months versus ten months. And we could provide the detail to the board.
Yeah, that'd be interesting.
Any other discussion? I'd like to separate item B six. All right, so this is going to be voting to approve items B one through B five, and B seven through B fifteen. Roll call please, Mr. Mahmud.
Ms. Bogushevsky?
Yes.
Ms. Antifante?
Yes.
Mr. Gillette?
Yes.
Mrs. Haas?
Yes.
Mrs. Haley?
Yes.
Mrs. Lay... Mr. Pulsifer?
Yes.
Ms. Wasson?
Yes.
Mr. Kent?
Yes.
Motion passed.
Thank you. I'd like to entertain a motion to approve item B six of the action agenda.
So moved.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Okay, I don't have any comment. Roll call please, Mr. Mahmud.
Ms. Bogushevsky?
Yes.
Ms. Antifante?
Yes.
Mr. Gillette?
Yes.
Mrs. Haas?
Yes.
Mrs. Haley?
Yes.
Mr. Pulsifer?
Yes.
Ms. Wasson?
Yes.
And Mr. Kent?
Upstate.
Motion passed.
Motion passes, thank you. Continuing on with the action agenda.
I'd like to ask for the board's consideration of the following motions in the area of operations, to approve the monthly financial reports, the bills list, line item transfers, the bylaw for second reading, professional services, and to approve the adult education program, as mentioned in Mr. Gillette's report. Approve and rescind, as listed, transportation route contracts. To accept the donation of $2,000 from Hair Plus Saloon to be used for autism respite care, as well as seeds for the fifth-grade Colonial Day provided for by the Bellmead Co-op, and we express our appreciation to both of those local vendors. Approve the regulations for School Safety Act of Shooter and reporting potentially missing or abused children. And approve the awarding of bid for paving drainage and site work at Amsterdam Triangle and Woodfern Elementary Schools. By the way, this bid award is going to Blackrock Enterprises due to the fact that Fisher Contracting's bid was disqualified, had a material defect. Also approve the awarding of the contract for Woodford's flashing, as well as awarding the contract for the Autton Road Intermediate School ceiling work, and awarding the bid for the STEM renovations at Hillsborough Middle School, as listed.
I'd like to entertain a motion to approve items C one through C twelve of the action agenda.
So moved.
Do I have a second? Any discussion for items C one through C... Mrs. Haley?
Can we comment about the bid disqualification at all, considering that it's a $140,000 difference, which is really frustrating to me as an operations member and a board member?
It was frustrating for us as well. The specifics, Mr. Mahmud, was on the...
The bid bond. There was a bid bond that was missing, and according to statute, that is a material defect, and we wouldn't be able to, you know, it's not there, it's not there.
Yeah, oh, okay.
I have a question on that, that occurred to me earlier today. Maybe Mr. Mahmud knows, or maybe Dr. Schiff. If this, if there were only, let's say, one other bidder, just, if it was only Diamond Construction and Fisher, and Fisher was disqualified, I don't think we would have to necessarily award to Diamond Construction, right? We've voted no when we only had one qualified bidder before, just last year. I think what makes this necessary to vote yes is because even without Fisher, we have a number of qualified bidders all bidding against each other. We do have a low bid from among them, and in every other sense, it was a competitive bid. So in case you were thinking back to the painting thing from, wait, from a while back, where we had just one qualified bid, and we said, "No, this is a different situation".
We do have Jean Parentoni, who's here tonight, who's a principal with SSP. I don't know if maybe you would try to answer that question as well. I'm not sure I answered it with enough detail.
Yes, good evening, Jean Parentoni, SSP. And what you just stated is correct. The board can, because you have other qualified bidders, you can proceed with the award of the contract. The other strategy that you have, you can always reject bids if you wish to and rebid. And at this point, given that it's late, fairly late in the season, we're not recommending that, because right now there's no guarantee that the bids would be held at the same numbers going out for a rebid. So we think that, given that you have competition, you have a number of bidders, it's actually in your best interest to move ahead with an award.
Thank you.
Can we separate out C nine then?
Do you want to separate C nine? Okay, any other?
Undermine.
Yes, no?
Well, it's about C nine, but since we're separating it, I'll save that for the appropriate part of the discussion.
Very good. Mrs. Haas?
Yeah, in relation to this and the other bid awards, what concerns me, in addition to the additional money that has to be spent, is the fact that we will now be delaying two projects that are very important to those schools, where the projects were supposed to take place. One was the Sunny Mead lighting, and another was the HES flooring project. Now, the Sunny Mead lighting project might be able to be recovered by the end of the summer, but the HES flooring is hallway flooring, and I don't understand how we can get that done other than during the summer. So I'm just wondering whether or not we should be exploring options to get that done.
Well, we talked about that a little bit, Dr. Schiff.
Sure, and Jean, if you wouldn't mind assisting with this answer. It looks like those two particular projects are looking at a possible change of scope. We had some experts in lining that came in and that are recommending a change to what was originally recommended in order to properly illuminate part of the parking lot. I believe there are stanchions and pole lights rather than lights off of the building for Sunny Mead, if I'm not mistaken.
That is correct. When we did the further investigation, after being authorized in March to investigate all the projects, we found that both the flooring situation, as well as the lighting situation, actually going to require some additional funding for those projects to go ahead to the level of operation and improvement that you're seeking in terms of your goals and standards. With the lighting in particular, it's going to need greater coverage. It's not just a few lights on the building, which was the original scenario. We thought that would actually cover it, but to get the level of security and illumination evenly, given that's including the angle of the sun and all sorts of things that are happening, that it's going to take more than that, it's going to take some stanchions to really get the full coverage. On the flooring, it's not just a matter of just repairing or resurfacing the very top layer. Further investigation has proved that what you have is you have a situation that's actually going to require some underlayment, both removal and a double layer actually to beef it up. It harkens back to the way it was originally designed and actually built, that as you start peeling the top layer off, you realize the reason it has that really bounce, that hollow feeling, is because it's actually not fully supported underneath the floor. So that's also an expansion of scope.
I fully understand that, but, you know, more to the point of getting it done.
Absolutely, absolutely, yes. Your point's taken, but that is, that's part of the investigation. That's the nature of construction, is that as you do further investigation, you modify the scope to...
I had that happen at my own house, so I know very well what you're talking about.
So we should expect to see those two specific projects to go back to the operations committee and then come back to the board, once that gets re-scoped?
Yeah, and just to clarify, when we aggregate all of these jobs that we're asking the board to approve, we are about 18,000 below budget for all of those. So we still have what we budgeted for those other two projects, plus we have 18,000 that's in the till that we could use for. But we really have to look at it carefully and see if the board wishes to go above budget for those other two projects.
I can also mention that in the bids that we've taken for the paving work in particular, we do have some allowances in there, in case additional work is discovered during the course of it. We have about $20,000 in repair, general repair allowance, and we have another approximately the same amount, $25,000 for any pipe replacement. That money, if we do not need it, if during the course of the construction is not needed, that allowance money stays with the Board of Education. So that's an additional $45,000 that may come back to fruition based on the implementation of the project.
Thank you. Mrs. Haley?
I'm just thinking about when the operations committee is going to meet, which I believe would be after our next board meeting, correct?
Yeah.
So...
Two days later.
Do we think about potentially having an operations meeting before the next board meeting? If we're so concerned about getting the project started?
Yeah, we can do that specialist, if it's going to go out to bid.
Who knows? Do we need a full meeting? I don't even know if we need...
You can call an operations committee anytime, Mr. Chairman.
I know. And I will wield that power wisely.
All right. So we are... Any other discussion for items C one through C eight and C ten through C twelve? Okay, roll call, wait. So again, this is to approve items C one through C eight and C ten through C twelve. Roll call please, Mr. Mahmud.
Ms. Bogushevsky?
Yes.
Ms. Antifante?
Yes.
Mr. Gillette?
Yes.
Mrs. Haas?
Yes.
Mrs. Haley?
Yes.
Mr. Pulsifer?
Yes.
Ms. Wasson?
Yes.
Mr. Kent?
Yes.
Motion passed.
Motion passes. Okay, now I'd like to entertain a motion to approve item C nine.
So moved.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Discussion, Mr. Pulsifer.
What was the estimate for this job? Do we know? So it's multiple?
When we put all of them together, we're 18,000 below budget. I don't know if that...
Eighteen thousand. Eighteen thousand for these, or for all the projects were...
For all five projects.
Is he looking at just the paving?
Just the paving.
Yes, well, yeah, just C nine.
The paving, Mr. Pulsifer at Amsterdam, I'm going to separate the paving by school, if that's okay.
Okay.
The paving at Amsterdam, the budget was $450,000. The quotes came in at, or the bid came in at $315,081. The paving for Woodfern, the budget was $165,000, and the bids came in at $255,890. At Triangle, the budget was $85,000, and the bids came in at $83,280. So the total budget was $700,000, and the total bids came in at $654,251.
So in the end, even though we didn't, we unfortunately didn't get the disqualified bid, we still have a bid that's under our estimate. So we'll be doing the work for less than we originally planned.
Okay, that's correct. Any other discussion for C nine? Okay, roll call please, Mr. Mahmud.
Ms. Bogushevsky?
Yes.
Ms. Antifante?
Yes.
Mr. Gillette?
Yes.
Mrs. Haas?
Yes.
Mrs. Haley?
No.
Mr. Pulsifer?
Yes.
Ms. Wasson?
Yes.
Mr. Kent?
Yes.
Motion passed.
Okay. Moving on to old business. Okay, we had an old business on Saturday was the New Jersey School Board Association Delegate Assembly. Gina Antifante went in, went and participated as alternate. And thank you, everybody here at the DAAS, for providing me your feedback, direction for the four different resolutions. So the first resolution, we had majority of board members providing similar discussion. So the first one was with regard to gun control, and we voted, we directed our delegate assembly representative to vote against. For the CSA limit study, we directed her to vote in favor. For the municipal, for those municipalities that changed the voting date to require public notice and a meeting to solicit feedback, we directed her to vote for it. And then for the homeschoolers, to require districts to confirm, validate that homeschool kids are getting an equivalent education, we directed the representative to vote against it. And I think that there was, if you want to share the meeting, and... I think that there was, if you wanna share the meeting, and thank you for your service.
I think getting nine people to agree, 145 in one room, is quite a challenge. They had nineteen counties there for New Jersey, they spent more time actually on their bylaws than I think we did the resolutions. I think we probably spent a good hour and a half on the bylaws, just so you know, all about wording and parliamentary procedure. So, the only change to the bylaws really is that they removed the mission statement, and that is so that they can update it at any point and not have to re-vote on the bylaws. And the other change they made to the bylaws was the number of meetings that are held every year, they changed the wording to be at least four meetings will be held every year, so that if they have five or six, they're in compliance, where this year they had five and they were not in compliance with their bylaws. So, that was where a lot of the discussion was. And then regarding the four resolutions, you know, gun control is a, a big concern for many people, safety of the children, the schools, so there was a lot of discussion, debate on what to do for gun, gun control. It did pass, the resolution did pass, so they will now move forward with, look, working with the legislatures to look at gun control and safety in the schools. I'm not sure what will come out of that yet. Resolution two was regarding salaries, it actually had the backing of Sixth Board of Ed's before it even came to the delegate meeting, so Sixth Board of Education had given their support of it to the task force. That again also did pass, so Resolution two passed, so they will be looking at the salary caps for the superintendent. Resolution three was regarding, sorry, hold on one second, was Resolution three?
The municipality.
The elections, and there was very little discussion on that one, that passed with 88% of the votes. Resolution four regarding homeschooling actually failed in the task force, so it didn't even come to vote at the meeting, so they didn't feel it was their jurisdiction to do that. Two other resolutions did come to the task force, but one is now a bill, and the other one died at the request of the board that submitted it.
Thank you, Mrs. Santa Fonte. Any other, Mrs. Haley?
I would just like to acknowledge the fact that we have a working sign at the high school, and I'm really excited, because I feel like it's been a really long time, but Mr. Mahmud, can you remind us and the taxpayers what that cost us?
It did not cost the Hillsborough taxpayer anything, this was paid for at a student activity fund.
I want to thank the administration and Mrs. Bingert, they're working very hard with the alumni to identify that, so, thank you.
Thank you. Any other old business? Dr. Swasan?
I don't know if it's old business, but tomorrow the middle school girls lacrosse team will be playing in the finals, the county finals, at Hill, at Bridgewater High School at, on the turf, at 4:00 PM.
Thank you.
Good luck.
Tomorrow evening, that'll be old business?
Yes, it will be old business, hopefully good old business.
I'd like to entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor?